Hager, Vice President of the Bismarck School Board. It's 5:15 on Monday, January 13th. I call this meeting to order. Welcome to those of you who are joining us both here and also online. You can find our agenda and follow along under the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. Mr. Scher, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eastgate. Mr. Hager.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Preski.
Here.
Dr. Fossnot, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? That brings us down to Item 1C, BPS Mission, Vision, and Values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states, "Together, our strong relationships build inclusive collaborative and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellence, and discovery." BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You'll also find a link in the agenda to the BPS Strategic Plan. Item 2 is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the Board?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Scher.
Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Hager. Yes. Item 3, Focus on Success. We do not have a focus on success for tonight, so that'll take us down to Item 4, Public Comment. The Board recognizes the central role parents play in the education of their children and supports active parent involvement in the educational process. The Board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with Policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to file the chain of command. Teacher, principal, assistant, superintendent, superintendent. For district issues, please reach out to Dr. Fossnot. Dr. Fossnot, I don't think we had anything comment-wise last meeting that we needed to address, so... If you do speak tonight, we simply ask that you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve to have adults model the expectations that we have for them. Groups urge to select one spokesperson. Individuals be limited to no more than four minutes and will be notified with 30 seconds remaining to conclude their remarks. The Board will not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, please stand and approach the podium if you wish to speak tonight. Okay, with that, public comment is closed. Item 5, Monitoring District Operations, OE8 Communication with the Board. Dr. Fossnot.
Good evening, Board members. If it's all right, I'll just present your OE8 report to you from here. But I just had a few things. You've got the report. We have all areas aside from one are in compliance in this report, and I'll go over that one that was with exception. I guess for me, and you're well aware, OE8, communicating with the Board is the focus of the quality and the effectiveness of my communication with you and keeping you informed. And of the 12 areas, there are 16 different indicators. So I just wanted to address a couple of them in the report this evening. One, 8.1, monitoring reports and results are really a very significant part of the work we do. It's like this. We do it each and every meeting. We're bringing something forth to you, and not only for the Board, but also the public. So I feel positive that we've met that, all those timelines this year, and met the scope of work plan that we do every year to ensure that we do that. 8.2, provide the Board timely information. I guess I hope you find my means of communicating with you beneficial. I know it could be the weekly memos. It could be the messages about something that's happening in the district that you should be aware of each day, but I believe I do my best to keep you informed, and if ever I'm not, or there's something that arises that you say, "Wish I would've known that," please let me know. Communication is a two-way process, and it takes collaboration and communication from both parties to do that well. 8.4 talks about providing adequate information from internal and external viewpoints. I believe the work that we've done with Excellence Committees this year and also the work we've done this fall with public forums have really been exemplar for this past year as far as ensuring that I'm doing the job, that you hear those internal and external voices. The videos, the surveys from those videos dealing with transportation, I thought were a highlight this year in communicating, improving our communication. If you go on to 8.7, thank you, Mr. Barnhart, is information clear and concise? I guess I try. Some things about 8.7, when you're dealing with these reports, some of these results and the layers of indicators are complex, and I do think it is a challenge to dive into them, dig into them, understand them. But I would always tell you and others, ask questions. They are a challenge. And with that is the one that is the one exception, and that is 8.9. The survey that you're given, and Mrs. Brown sent that out before her departure, showed that maybe I could've done better on a monitoring report data and explaining that sooner or giving it to you timely based on that. There was at least one response that kind of said that they didn't feel like they were informed all the time with their monitoring reports, but I'd say I'm okay with that. I think that's fair. Again, I would go back to the previous one. Those are complex, and they're deep. And if we get a board packet to you out a day late or, you know, a little bit more tardy than we want, it is a lot to get through. And I do think we've... My office has tried to do better to give you some bits of information ahead of time, maybe some feeder information, some deeper understanding information, so you understand some of the components. But we could do... If we need to do better on that one, I'm okay with that one. And 8.11, that's towards the end, maybe the last... That isn't the last one. I think we have 8.12. But, you know, I know this one deals with formal complaints, so I'm going to expand my comments on that a little bit. And, you know, when there is a formal complaint, communicating that to you, make sure you're aware. But just in general, I hope that people over the last 20 months now, almost 20 months of my tenure in Bismarck Public Schools, it's like if you have a concern, if you see me in the hallway, if you see me out in the... I know some people now start to recognize me at the grocery store. You see the look. It's like they shouldn't feel bad or feel awkward to just stop and say, "I want to talk to school. I want to talk about school." That's okay. If you've got a concern or something you want to talk about, or the basketball game score or whatever, that's okay. That's good. I like that, and I think we're better when we respond that way. So in that one, dealing with complaints, I think we have been improving as well. I know there's probably people out there that don't like some of our answers as far as some of the things that we do, but I think we always give an ear, we listen, we give a respectful response, and we try to meet people where they're at. So that's OE8. Unless you have additional questions, I would try my best to address them for you.
Board members, any comments? Ms. Preski.
No, I really appreciate the level of communication that we have with Dr. Fossnot. I think that it's whether, like you mentioned, whether it's through his weekly memos to us or through text messages alerting us to certain situations. It's been phenomenal, and just I like to know what's going on. So that's great, even though you might not hear a response or a thank you and a responding email for the report. Just always appreciate that communication, also hearing it not only with the Board but the public as well, that they just appreciate and acknowledge that the communication has increased. So thank you. And I guess unless there's other comments or whatever, I didn't see anyone motioning for their light, so I will just move that we accept OE8 and find in compliance.
Sir?
Mr. Scher, we have a motion and a second.
Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes. Okay, that brings us down to Item 5B, GC7 Board Members' Code of Conduct. So Mr. Eastgate was kind enough to leave me a lengthy one that I'll read tonight for us, so this will be the reading of GC7 Board Members' Code of Conduct. "The Board and its members will conduct themselves lawfully with integrity and high ethical standards in order to model behaviors expected of staff and students and to build public confidence and credibility. One, Board members will serve the interests of the citizens of the entire school district. Members recognize this responsibility to the whole, to be greater than: A) Any loyalty to a member may have to any other advocacy or interest groups; B) Loyalty based upon membership on other boards or staffs; C) Conflicts based upon personal interests of any Board member who is also a parent of a student in the district; and D) Conflict based upon being a relative of an employee of the district. Two, Board members will not exercise individual authority over the organization; A) Members will not assume personal responsibility for resolving operational problems or complaints. Complaints will be referred to the superintendent for investigation and resolution; B) Members will not attempt to personally direct any part of the operational organization; C) When speaking to the press or otherwise publicly sharing personal opinions, members will respect decisions of the Board and will not undermine those decisions; D) Members will not publicly express individual negative judgments about the superintendent or staff performance. Three, to build trust among members and to ensure an environment conducive of effective government, members will: A) Focus on issues rather than personalities; B) Respect decisions of the full Board; C) Exercise honesty in all written and interpersonal interactions, never intentionally misleading or misinforming each other; D) Criticize privately, praise publicly; E) Make every reasonable effort to protect the integrity and promote the positive image of the district and one another; F) Never embarrass each other or the district. Four, members will exercise personal discipline and performance of their duties, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum when acting as Board members. Five, members will maintain confidentiality appropriate to the sensitive issues and information that otherwise may tend to compromise the integrity or legal standing of the Board, especially those matters discussed in executive session." That concludes the reading of GC7 Board Members' Code of Conduct. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So I think it's good that we have expectations of ourselves, right? We have expectations of the superintendent and the district, and this is a great policy. I would move that we retain GC7 Board Members' Code of Conduct.
And I would second.
We have a motion and a second. I would agree with what Mr. Lee stated there. This has been a good policy for us. It is good for us as Board members to have a set of standards and a high set of standards, really, when you think about who we're serving. Mr. Scher, we have a motion and a second.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes. So that brings us down to Matters Reserve.
If I may, Mr. Vice President, on the second part of that, I'll finish that, that I would move that we determine the Board as in compliance with this policy.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Scher.
Preski.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes. Okay, now that takes us down to Matters Reserve for Board action. Item 6A, Board Members' School Visits. Ms. Preski.
Thanks. One of my school visits recently was to Wilmore right before Christmas break. So Wilmore, middle of Bismarck, built in 1951. I was greeted at the door by Ms. May, one of the school ambassadors, a fifth grader, and only their fifth graders can be part of their ambassador program. I think many of us have commented on this. I guess I would almost call it a trend of having, you know, empowering the students to be leaders and guide us through the school and visit with us along the way. And it's great. I think it just really gives them exposure and helps them build different skills. And from what I heard from her, anyway, that they were all fighting over this tour. So I don't know if it was me or if it was just the idea of getting out of class around the Christmas time, but it was a great tour, and she did a phenomenal job, and I can understand why Ms. May is an ambassador at Wilmore. And I have more on her at the end. But she took me around the school, and just we went, poked our heads into the classroom, said hi, and visited along the way. One of the things we visited about, I noted her sweatshirt. It was a My Little Pony sweatshirt, and so I had a comment on it, and she told me that it was vintage. Right to the heart. No, it was cute. But anyway, one of the things that she teased out in our tour of the school was the accessibility challenges that are at this school. As I mentioned, Wilmore was built in 1951. So she was definitely planting the seed for conversation that I was going to have with Principal Jill Vallejo. But she pointed out, you know, the lack of handicap access at the school, that there's no elevator, and that really they were in need of some safer equipment around the school. The school is two levels, so the third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms are upstairs. So ended my tour with Ms. May and then had a visit with the principal. And again, yeah, we talked about some of those ADA concerns or accessibility concerns and really just deferred maintenance issues that we as a Board have talked about as well, and just that this is one of those schools that is definitely in need of some eyes and some attention. Some examples were brought up, like a fifth grader broke their leg last year, two weeks before school, and couldn't get up the stairs, and so missed physically going to school, which is heartbreaking, and it's really something that I feel like as a school board, we should definitely take into consideration. They have another teacher currently that was under the same situation where they had some medical, a medical situation where they couldn't climb stairs. And so they were definitely in a hard spot there with missing out on getting up to their classroom. And there's a couple families that aren't attending the school because the school is not accessible, and they need assistance in that area. So definitely some real-life situations that, you know, when we're making tough budget decisions, I think hearing about these real-life examples and situations, you know, really, I guess, put a light on some of those budget decisions that we have to make in the future for our schools. As far as the student population, Principal Vallejo described it as really being a very high-mobility area. A lot of families that they're servicing are... There's some kids that are with parents who are at the abused adult safe house, sober homes, a welcome home house, and really emphasizing how school in this neighborhood brings a lot of stability and security for those kids in that area. We also talked about aides and the importance of having aides in that school. Thirty-six kindergarteners, five are nonverbal. There's one student in the school that needs two aides full-time, several kids on IEPs. And then as we're discussing possible solutions, one idea was, you know, maybe because their population changes so much from even the beginning of the year, you know, down a few weeks, that maybe a possible solution could be having a pool for additional aides, and then they kind of shift to wherever the population changes. But very, very, I don't know, good can-do attitude there at Wilmore. But again, we really, I think we all go into buildings that definitely are different. You know, you have your brand-new schools, and then you go into these schools that are in the heart of Bismarck and have a few more years on them and are showing their age and definitely need some of that TLC. Loved a sign that was in Principal Vallejo's office. It said, "Sixty-five new days, sixty-five new chances." And I think that's really a good thing to reflect on, especially as we are in the beginning of our 2025. Okay, now I have to get back to Ms. May. So this girl, she's going far. I loved her attitude. So she told me that she started a newspaper at Wilmore, and it's called the Wilmore Pa Per, because they're the Wildcats. And it's put together every month, and she's very concerned because she needs to pass the torch. She started this paper, and, you know, she's going to be leaving to middle school next year, so she's really looking for the next student to really help and take over the pa per. And so she's starting to advertise for a new editor/leader/content developer. So for any Wilmore students out there, maybe that's a position for you. Anyway, it was a great visit. Appreciated it. Appreciated the time. That's what I got.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Preski.
Yeah, good advertisement.
So I actually have a dual school visit. It's a little dated, because I did this in December. It kind of piled up on me, so I'm trying to get through a few of them. And when I say dual school visits, it's kind of like Ms. Preski's, where it's some of the older schools in our district, so Highland Acres and Roosevelt. So you go there with Ms. Beiswinger, you get two-for-one. So I actually started at Highland Acres at the start of the school day. So when I pulled up, you know, the school hadn't officially started. It's kind of got this small-town feel to it, and a lot of parents, you know, giving kids hugs on the sidewalk while they run off to the playground or going inside, parents kind of waving to them as they went in. So it's kind of a unique feel to it. So I met Principal Beiswinger as she was coming off the playground in morning duty. We kind of walked in together. We spent some time kind of walking around the building, visiting. She told me, you know, generally how much she values her staff, how they do such a wonderful job. And when you think of Highland Acres and Roosevelt as, you know, single-section schools, you know, one teacher per one grade, it's pretty unique. So we talked about some unique things that they're doing there with their students. So they have kind of, I'll call it these, I'm not going to do this justice, but these monthly projects where across all grades, they get together and they discuss cultures and life scales. So for example, back in November, the life scale was empathy. So they discuss empathy, and they work that into kind of cultural studies. And again, back in November, their cultural study was India. So they'll have like a guest speaker who will come in, maybe somebody who grew up in India or a different country, and kind of talk about the culture and things that they learned, you know, growing up, and how that can potentially relate back to empathy. So this is student-led. Students plan these meetings. They put together, with some help, come up with the speaker. So it's kind of a unique thing that they do there. So before we left to go down to Roosevelt, we ran into Chadwick Kramer, who's one of our BPS Indian Education Coordinators. So anybody who's met Chadwick knows Chadwick. He's a great guy, always smiling, always seems to have a positive outlook. I've run into him at multiple schools across the district, you know, always bouncing around, doing different things, really good guy. He happened to be there that morning. He was working with a new student at Highland Acres who was having a little bit of a tough time getting familiar with a new school. So he was showing up on a routine basis just to kind of help him feel comfortable in that new setting. So it was nice to see Chadwick. So Principal Beiswinger and I went down to Roosevelt, did a quick tour there, very similar to what we did at Highland Acres. We did run into Ms. Beiswinger's grandson, who happens to be a student at the school. So it's pretty special for her to have him there with her. You know, one thing that really struck me, and I know it happens across our district, but it's more pronounced when you're talking about Highland Acres and Roosevelt, is the number of staff that we have that go back and forth and move around the district and go to different multiple schools throughout the day. You know, we talk about single-section, you know, schools where the first-grade teacher, for example, at Highland Acres doesn't have another first-grade teacher to go collaborate with and bounce ideas off. So they use a partnership at Roosevelt, and just some of the challenges that they have to deal with as a single-section school that may be different than some others. But then you think of the other kind of traveling positions from custodial staff to fire teachers to nurses to other support staff moving throughout the district. One, I would tongue-in-cheek say the biggest issue was when I was talking to Ms. Beiswinger at Roosevelt, I noticed that her Highland Acres Hawks lanyard had now been replaced with a Roosevelt Rough Riders lanyard. So I asked her, "Do you change that for each school?" And she said, "Absolutely, because the kids would let her know otherwise." And she said she'll go so far as sweatshirts, too. So if she goes from one school to the next, she'll make sure to change, so she's got the right outfit for the right school. So I want to thank Ms. Beiswinger and the staff at Roosevelt and Highland Acres for letting me visit and tour their school. I appreciate their time. So that's my school visit.
Just an idea for her. She should get one of those sweatshirts with the half and half, you know?
Well, if she's watching now, she's got the idea.
Tell her to talk to Mama Kelsey.
All right. No other school visits, so that will bring us to, let's see, the Transportation Bell Time Change Study. Dr. Fossnot.
We have one, Mr. Hager, at least on my agenda. We may add it at late, the Board meeting schedule. I think Ms. Amber had that late.
Oh, I missed it, sorry.
About this time of year, we usually present you projected dates for the next '25, '26 school year. So if you choose to table them, if you want to consider them, and wait till next time to approve them, or if you want to approve them, we usually make adjustments as needed as we go to. So you have the dates for your review.
Ms. Preski.
I'll move that we approve the schedule for School Board meetings for July 2025 through July 2026.
I would second.
Mr. Scher, we have a motion and a second.
Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, now down to Item C.
Now we'll tackle bell time. So in December, I think, last time we met, or I was here to meet with you to review the bell time, we did the presentation. If you remember the recommendation, we'd like to just throw up a few quick slides for you today, just for primarily viewers at home, just to give an update of where we were, where we're at then, and where we're at today, looking for your approval to move ahead with a two-tier system. So if you remember the history on this, this started a little over a year ago, where we said we need to improve, we just need to improve our transportation system, reliability, quality, making sure we can get buses to bus stops on time. In addition to that, we knew we had a driver shortage problem, which was leading to many of those quality problems that we were having, and just the length of bus routes and delays in service along with budgetary constraints. I would tell you, we still have, I got a picture from a principal even this week, that we still have significant delays, kids waiting at schools and stops as we continue to struggle with our present transportation system. So we hired transport at that time, said evaluate our bus system, and then about this time last year, we got their recommendations. And then that went to our Excellence Committee and to look at and say, review their recommendations. One of their recommendations, one of their more aggressive recommendations... One of their recommendations, one of their more aggressive recommendations was you should look at a two-tier busing system that would allow you to improve quality, reliability, and hopefully maybe save some resources you can use for other things. So that went to the process. If you remember this last fall, I guess for viewers, we had our community forums in each of the middle schools. In addition to that, we went out to multiple PTOs and student or school level organizations when we could during that time to get feedback and garners much feedback as we could. We did videos both for internal and external public with the survey so people could respond. We had thousands of responses, which was very positive. Again, went to Operational Excellence to review it and then Operational Excellence took the feedback too, this last fall winter, to look at that and say, okay, what do we hear, what should be the recommendation? And that recommendation is what came to you along with the admin recommendation when we proposed earlier this year. So the recommendation on December ninth was we should be moving to a two-tiered system. And at that time, we said, board members, think about it, just reflect on it, take some time. This is big decisions and see what you're thinking. And part of that was, is we were looking for Transpar to do some routing because we're talking in very big generalities and that was noted by our public in our community forum because we, when you're routing thousands of kids, you don't really know the details. So you run them through the system, you actually run them through the, the computer application and you say, how's that going to work? So we started that routing process even before the ninth because we just thought we need to start that, even before we made that recommendation to you. What I would tell you today is we met last week with Transpar and they are still routing. They're not able to say, here's all the kids and all the pickup times and all, and what we recommend for start times. But what I would offer you is that with a very high level of affirmation, of a high level of, what's the word I'm thinking of? Confidence, thank you, lacking of confidence. With a high level of confidence, they were telling us that our first start time would be elementary at seven fifty. And we have pushed and pulled on that time for some time, but that really becomes the, the, the root that everything else grows from, right? So that first initial drop-off time with the, if everybody remembers, we're trying to keep sixty minutes between drop-offs. So when elementary kids get dropped off, there's a sixty-minute span between secondary kids getting dropped off. That gets enough time to run those buses out again and pick up the next group of kids, keeping elementary and secondary for the most part separate, segregated, and gives us enough time on our worst day. So you have to remember, they're, they're planning for our worst day of travel. No offense, it takes a little, I'm sure everybody knows it takes a little bit more time to get around town now, today, than it does in August because of streets and weather conditions. So they're taking that into the calculation. They are not ready at this time to tell us exactly what all the middle schools and high schools and all the schools would be. What I would tell you with high confidence is, is that we believe we can make it work with a seven fifty start time for elementary. And we would hopefully very soon understand that secondary is going to be in, like what we're saying, that eight thirty to eight forty window. We're not sure exactly what schools are at what time, so we're kind of holding fast on that, letting them do their work. But I guess the question I have for you is after having a presentation before, having some think time and this, knowing pretty high confidence that we can make this work with a seven fifty eight elementary start time, is the board supportive of that? Because if you are, I'd appreciate your direction and I'd appreciate you kind of saying, Jeff, go get your work done so we can get on. There's a lot of things to address yet. And I would add to this with a status, we don't have a slide for that. We continue to have our bell time committee working. We're working very hard on childcare because that was a huge need for our community based on any time, we're working on that, even looking at how many slots are in every single school and what the staffing needs are, so can we support staff to add slots? So every family has more access to childcare. That's what we're working on now, waiting for Transpar to do the, the real logistics of routing kids and families, so. Do you have any questions?
Board members. Ms. Peterson.
Thanks, Dr. Fosnot, and thanks, Vice President Hager. No, I think this was, you know, it, it's one of the things that I kind of connect and align back to what we, you know, both when Donnell was over visiting Willmore and some of the, the things that they talked about with aides. I mean, I think at the, at the core of this, a solution needs to be made. And I think even at the forums, I really appreciate when we, when we think about the communication way, you know, just the, the way that we overly communicated and brought back feedback. And I've appreciated how both the committees and your team continues to reflect back on that communication. Like that's not over, you know, we, we don't have this all figured out yet. There's still things to, to hammer out in terms of the details. But connecting it back to the, the fact that we're not going to have enough drivers to do this work, just like the aides is a constant problem of just finding the right staff to be able to do that. And I think that this actually, this two-tiered system in, in, in its totality will provide some of the much-needed, not only quality control on the bus, but in the supervision before and after school and some of the challenges that we've heard from committee, community members as well. And the harder part is we can't promise with any of these decisions that all of the community's questions or it's going to be a perfect system in, in the future. And that's some of the hard decisions that I think that, you know, you have to make when, when you're making kind of a big shift like this. But I appreciate and knowing that you're connecting back with your principals, with the teachers, with educators, and really looking at all those kind of solutions. At least that's what we've talked about, not only in, in these meetings, but also in a lot of the workshops we've had. And we've kind of heard that within the committees as well. So that's a long statement and I don't have a question other than the fact that I continue to hope that we'll get updates as more of these details come out in terms of those, of those operations.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This was one of those considerations that came to us from a consultant. And a lot of times it takes a little while to dig in, but it wasn't some, that was something I was a little bit skeptical of at first. And as you, you start to peel back the onion and you learn that all the other large districts have a tiered system, it's like, hmm, not that that's a reason we should do it, but it makes you think, well, why do they have that, right? And then you see how this could really help the, the driver shortage problem. I, I, I think we've always had routes that we haven't been able to have drivers for the last few years. It's just become a real, real issue as, as every company has realized and trying to fill positions is tough. And you can see where this can make an immediate impact there. Change is always tough, but, but nothing changes unless, unless we, we change the way we're doing things. So I've just definitely been, been sold on this. I'm excited about it. It's not lost on me that some families, it's, it's going to be a, a little bit painful for and it's going to take an adjustment, right? I just hope our community and our businesses understand maybe what these families are going through and that everybody gives a little bit of a grace period this year. I really feel like when we get through this year, we're going to come out much better than we started. And that's, that's really the goal, so, thanks.
Ms. Preski.
Yeah, I echo a lot of those same comments, especially where this is really going to take a community to support this change. I mean, like you said, Board Member Lee, community support, some grace by employers. I was really nervous about this change just because of the impact on families and just, you know, not knowing how a change like this could affect, you know, parents' work schedules and getting kids to school and picking them up and all those pressures that I think we've all felt at one time or another in our lives. But I've also been on the other end where I've had, had my, my child waiting for a bus and it doesn't show up or it came, you know, several minutes earlier and no one knew and they're standing out in a day like today when it's ten below zero. And, and so really the whole goal of this was to provide some reliability and, and a safer busing system for our students. And so I think that's, we have to keep that goal in mind. And really, I don't think there's a way to achieve those things unless we really address this. And I, I, I agree, change is hard, but I think that this is, this is the solution.
Thank you, Ms. Preski. I guess the comment that I would have here is, you know, you, you think about it, we, we started on this well over a year ago, down this path, having it been in the Operational Excellence portfolio and, and the amount of time we, we alone would have five meetings that this was a to- topic of, of those meetings. We spent a lot of time looking at this, you think of the, the community forums, the PTO meetings that you did, the, the surveys and hearing from folks, you know, there, there's some that this is going to cause some issues for to start, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. There are others that this is, this is going to be great for. We heard, we heard from, from both sides. As Ms. Peterson said, there's nothing here that we can do is going to please everybody. It's not a decision that we came to lightly. We spent a lot of time working through this, processing, thinking about this. And we're not kind of that final, final product yet. We'll, we'll, we'll get there. But the question that I constantly came, come back to and it came out in the Operational Excellence Committee was, was made by somebody is, what does it look like if we do nothing?
Right.
What, what, what does it look like for us two, three, four, five years if we do nothing? So that, that, that really struck a, struck a nerve with me. So that's why I, I support this, this change. Guess one question I, I do have then for you, Dr. Fosnot. So if we approve this, I would assume that probably in the superintendent report, we would see periodic updates of kind of how the process is, is working itself out.
Yeah, Mr. Hager, board members, that's very fair. Again, I plan on keeping you and really this is a great conduit for me to speak to the community, but we were already working with Mr. Kuntz, you'll privacy a, a press release tomorrow, helping to inform people, knowing we're not all done, but we'll continue informing you, informing the public through board meetings, press releases, newsletters, say, here's where we are. I would hope, I don't know, next month, we have pretty firm times for these and we know exactly where those projected start and times will be for families. I think that'll help reduce a lot of concern, so we want to put that out as soon as we can. And then I think to your point, Mr. Lee, get that business support because now they know too, when, it's amazing, we all kind of play around school even when we're not in school, right? And that we affect the community, so get those out soon so people can adjust, so, yes.
With that, entertain a motion.
Yeah, with that, I would approve the transition of BPS to a two-tier bell time schedule with the elementary schools starting first. And we would like to direct the administrative team to continue planning for this transition, which will begin with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Scher, we have a motion and a second.
Lee.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Hager.
Yes. Item seven, the consent agenda, what are the wishes of the board?
I'll move that we adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mr. Scher, we have a motion and a second.
Peterson.
Yes.
Preski.
Yes.
Lee. Hager.
Yes. Item eight, superintendent's report, Dr. Fosnot.
All right, the first one I will pass back to Mr. Scher for major projects. Let's say we only have one.
Thank you, Superintendent Eastgate, Vice President Hager, members of the board. What did I, what did I say? Oh, man, Superintendent Fosnot, wow. Tonight before you, I'll try to do better. We, we have the, the Career Academy up at the Silver Ranch site. I would say that real, real soon, we're going to start seeing concrete or steel erected. You know, like I said last time, all the steel is onsite, concrete's wrapping up and we'll start seeing structure very, very soon. Well, we continue to work on additional funding for that building. That seemed, that's kind of on our forefront and with our new foundation director to help with some of that. I'm excited. Also show the, the financials for that and the, the one last thing I'll say is that's, I think there's, that's the, we have about twenty thousand dollars left on Lincoln and that project did come under budget roughly four hundred thousand dollars. So that was due to value engineering and so that's, that's a positive, but we'll close that project out hopefully this next month. And that's all I really had for construction projects. Hughes is, is kind of on hold. We're going to do some minor stuff with our internal staff, but kind of waiting on some other stuff before we move majorly at Hughes. So I'd answer any questions the board would have.
Ms. Peterson.
Mr. Scher, you know, we, in between the last meeting and this, we did have a BPS board workshop. And so just wanted to maybe ask, maybe if you could just explain a little bit more, something that kind of came up when we talked a little bit about some of the, the CTE plans, just some of the, the hopes that were kind of, because we, we, we reference a lot of those and I think that, I, I just maybe kind of assuring the public that there is a plan and we're kind of getting periodic updates like throughout some of those. So I don't know if it, if you or maybe Dr. Fosnot want to just allude to some of what you guys are, are kind of working on in terms of some of those CTE plans.
So we, we essentially have, we bid out what we called phase one. We do have a phase two. We, we don't have, we have schematic design, but we'd have to do design development drawings and specifications to bid that out when we're ready. If, if we see either a large influx of various revenues, we might want to go forward so that we can do the work. For example, I had the opportunity to meet with a contractor last week that said, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure it's easier for me to donate man-hours. So I would love to bring a bunch of guys in for this many hours and do the work. Well, that's a great idea, but for us to do that, we have to actually bid it out. Not bid it out, but get it ready to bid out so that we know actually what has to be constructed. Phase two is essentially finishing the shell on probably the north two-thirds of the building. You know, and we, we are hopeful for some additional funding through the state. We also have, you know, the donations we're working on and then if the board would do anything in the future.
If I can add to that, Ms. Peterson, Mr. Scher is talking a lot about the facility and that's great and that's important. And then I probably compliment that with saying, okay, then what's the programming? And I think that's what we've added, added in, like what's the programming change that's going to shift there in stage one or phase one? Then phase two, when that comes around, what's that look like? For those that may have noticed, that's why I was up at the Capitol Day in a, in a Senate Appropriations Committee, trying to advocate for and help to get additional state funding, probably more for the programmatic side than the facility side. Like, okay, let's help support new and expanding programming, not only for Bismarck Public Schools, but our new central region career and tech center. And even eventually, I think we'd love to see, and I advocated for today, new and expanding program for middle school programs. So both those complement each other, the both those plans.
Okay, uh, the financial report. Mr. Scher.
Well, I think we should give Superintendent Eastgate some more kudos. Thank you, Vice President Hager. So the financial report is in front of you. Remember, this one's a little unique because normally you see the financial report at the second meeting. But since we didn't have a second meeting in December, this would be the month ending November or the day ending November, month ending November. And you can see where we're at with financials. The, the ones that I like are the big boxes that have favorables and unfavorables. You can see that our year-to-date revenues are slightly trending as unfavorable to the tune of about five hundred thousand. And on the flip side of that, we're favorable on the expenses, we're under by one point five. So that's a million dollars still to the good. Some people get a little wigged out at five hundred thousand, but with a two-hundred-million-dollar budget, that's really a small, small percentage. So we're, we're trending very well there. And I don't have any specific line items that, that I feel like I need to make the, the board aware of that we just, that are really, really out of whack. And I'd answer any questions the board would have on the financial report.
If you don't mind, I'll add one. Like you notice, one that catches my eye, if people look at like spending for Johnson O'Malley, that's all federal funding. So we've received more federal funding than what we budgeted, so people don't get too concerned that we've over expended lines like that, particularly when they're federally funded, so.
Thank you. Uh, item eight C, kindergarten roundup.
I am just on behalf of Mr. Barnhart and the elementary division. We really rely on parents to complete kindergarten roundup. I think we said this last year as well. We, we plan for those, based on those numbers. We set sections based on those numbers, how many sections we're going to have and given schools in our community. So, if you have a four-year-old, I'm going to look in for Mr. Barnhart for confirmation, four-year-old, going to be a five-year-old, or a five-year-old should be ready for kindergarten. It sets the kindergarten registration process and timeline. I think you can begin, pull that off, but just February 1st, and begin that process. And doing it early does help the district. So, please do, if you need help, reach out to central office, and we can do that, and help guide you through that process. So, that is just one part. And if you don't mind, if I can add two more, just if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Okay. The other one I'd like to add is resignation happened during December. We haven't had a meeting, but I can tell you it's filled at this point. This is a really important position, the BPS Foundation Director. Our foundation, BPS Foundation, and you see that here, because you get that experience with all of our scholarship winners every year, but just supporting kids who needs hat and gloves, kids who need food, kids who need, want to do art activities, and we, and the foundation has organized those. If it's filling the bus every year, our foundation takes a lead in organizing that. I, I do publicly just want to thank Ms. Stacy Lang for her time in that position and applaud her for her next adventures in life. And it has been a challenge to find someone that we think can fill those very big shoes that she left. But the BPS Foundation is, is hugely important to the success of our, of our educators and kids. And I do think we found someone who can fill those shoes. And, and we'll do an introduction when the time's right to come back, so you get to meet that person. I think it's that important. So, just so you know. And my last item, and it is only nine after six, is I guess, go Vikings. Let's see, we got to go watch the games. So...
Thank Dr. Dr. Fosnot. With that, all, all agenda items have been considered. I declare this meeting adjourned.